Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for October 18th, 2022. My name is Carrie Martin. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few announcements to make. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2220. I'm going to start over there. Pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, sign into law on July 16th, 2022. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to be entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless it's here notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream in the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access to and ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting may feature public comment. Members, and I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Yeah.
Amy Protski?
Yeah.
Billy Milton? Here. Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Steph, and I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Laurie Connors?
Yeah.
Ground rules for the meeting. We don't have presenters or applicants listed on the agenda. For public comments, by phone dial star nine to raise your hand, a way to be recognized by the chair, please know party or phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen, a way to be recognized by the chair. To hear our last members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only, once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes for any comments. Okay, that concludes the announcements. Jumping into the agenda. I did want to make, before we get started here, we were starting with, we don't have any public hearings this evening, so we have old new business for this evening. As we get started here, just an announcement that regarding an update on litigation, the ISOMEDICS Operations Inc., DBA, STERS, AST versus Northborough Planning Board, Land Court Case Number 21, MISC 000436, has been dismissed. Secondly, I just want to get the exact numbers here. The Abo Construction Inc. and K.A. Realty Inc. versus the town of Northborough and Northborough Planning Board, Worcester Superior Court, Civil Action Number 1985 CV 00178, has also been dismissed. So that is on public record for anyone who would like to look at those records. It's certainly available online, and I wanted to make that announcement here tonight. Also want to acknowledge the Planning Board's work throughout that time. It's, it can be a stressful thing, and I appreciate the perseverance and it was a long time. It's been a couple of years, maybe three or so for both of those cases. So thank you to the Planning Board for all the work put into that. I know sometimes this looks like an easy job, but there are a lot of sleepless nights for all of us in these last couple of years. So thank you for that. Moving on to first item on the agenda is the consideration of minutes from September 20th. So I personally did not read these minutes. Did everybody else have time to read these minutes?
I did not.
No.
Okay. So why don't we table those minutes? And I'm sorry, did those actually already come out and then we missed them or?
No, no, Melanie was able to send those to me Thursday, on Thursday, but unfortunately, the other committees that I'm working with have been revving up with quite a bit of work. So I was unable to turn around the minutes until today. And then I received some suggested changes, which I emailed out to you today, but I'm not surprised that you didn't have time to review them because those weren't sent out to you until probably two this afternoon. So sorry for the late turnaround. I do also, I will admit, Melanie has sent me probably three executive session minutes, which I have not yet had time to review. So that's a priority for this week. I will turn those around. So hopefully at our next meeting in November, we can have a whole slew of minutes approved.
That sounds exciting. Well, no worries. Sometimes it's hard to keep up with. Did we get those? Not get those? So thanks for clarifying that. Okay, next we have the appointment of a Planning Board member to the Temporary Traffic and Safety Committee. So the last time, we just brought this up as a topic, but obviously wasn't on the agenda, so we weren't able to discuss who actually would be the candidate for this committee. I think last, the last we met, Bill, you expressed that you would be interested. Are there other members interested in the Traffic and Safety Committee or have any comments or questions about the Safety Committee?
No, thanks. I'm all set. I nominate Bill.
Okay. So there is a nomination for a motion, is that a motion to nominate Bill Pierce to the Traffic? Okay. All right, all in favor? Any additional discussion on that? Bill, I think you're a great, remind us, what, you actually have a profession that has a, is there an engineering background? If you wouldn't mind just sharing that for a second. You have a lot of experience, actually.
It's, yeah, it's, it's not civil engineering. My engineering is more technical. But, you know, at the MBTA, we do a lot of, you know, this kind of work. Especially when it comes down to, I know one of the things that we're looking at is traffic flow and right away, and some of those items that we deal with at the MBTA as well, even, even in the Technology Department. So, but I think a lot of mine comes more from just my personal experience. You know, that was one of the things that got me interested in, in, you know, doing this work for the town was the sidewalk in front of my house, right? So, and Carrie, you and I have had many conversations about, about that. So I think that's more where it comes from.
Very nice. Well, that's great. Okay, so there's been a motion that made and seconded to nominate Bill Pierce to the Traffic and Safety Committee. All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Hi.
Bill?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, unanimously appointed as the Planning Board Member to Traffic and Safety. So for that, Laurie, is that something that we have to reach out to the Board of Selectmen and just let them know that Bill is our candidate, our nominee?
Yes. Yep. So I will submit Bill's name to the Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen's Office tomorrow.
Okay. Great. Congratulations, Bill. I look forward to your participation on that. Next on the agenda is reconsideration of language for design guidelines for two-family dwellings. So Laurie, you'd send me a message that taught me a brand-new word. So I'll go on to see to that for tonight.
And it was new to me as well. And so after the meeting, Googled the definition of visitability. And I emailed to you folks two different variations of the definition from the visitability.org website. Essentially, they said, sorry, a house that is considered visitable meets the following three basic requirements. One, zero-step entrance. Doors with 32 inches of clear passage space and one bathroom on the main floor you can get into in a wheelchair. So the idea is to not just build homes in accordance to the, with the folks who actually are going to purchase the homes, but also keeping the visitors in mind who may be limited as far as physical ability. So, so what I would like to do is maintain the vocabulary that was on the first page of the design guidelines. So at the last meeting, we had talked about substituting the word excessive access for visitability. But since there's so much more to visitability than simply access, I really would like to maintain that word in the text of the two-family dwelling design guidelines.
Any questions or comments from the board on that? Amy is Design Review Chair. Any comments or do you support that as well?
Yeah, I support it.
Okay. Okay, if no further discussion, is there, can I put a dual motion in there to reconsider and then vote to accept?
Yes. So it'd be two different motions.
Oh, two different, okay. Then is there a motion to first reconsider the language? No, I don't want to reconsider the language. I want to reconsider the vote. We voted to approve it. Okay, so is there a motion to reconsider the vote for the design guidelines for two-family dwellings?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so the next item would be to amend the design guidelines for two-family dwellings to change the word from access to visitability. So is there a motion to do such?
So you could just adopt the design guidelines as originally presented at the last meeting. So the way the motion worked at the last meeting was that you approved the motion with the amendment to change that word. So now you could just adopt, go forward with a motion to adopt the design guidelines as presented without substituting the word access for visitability.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the design guidelines for two-family dwellings as presented?
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie? Aye. Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. Thanks for catching that, Laurie. I don't know what made you even look at that.
Well, we were just kind of curious as to, to what the word meant because I had never heard it before either. And so I wanted to see if it was in fact a typo or whether it was a legit vocabulary word that I just wasn't familiar with.
All right, great. Next, we have a letter of support from the Planning Board for the Aqueduct Multi-Use CPC Project. Is this being presented by you, Laurie, or is, Amy, are you presenting this?
That was me.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't pull up my information, but Ashley and I put together, Ashley Davies of Open Space, and she's also on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And I put together a CPC application for a multi-use trail that runs the length of the aqueduct from Westboro to Berlin. And from Berlin, there's two more miles to get to the Mass Central Rail Trail. And then Westboro had a feasibility study done in 2021. And if they do their section on Lyman Street, then we'll be able to connect also to Lake Chauncey. So we thought it was a great idea. And this is just to get approval for a feasibility study because, you know, like most other things in town, we feel like you need that to go forward to apply for different grants. And it will give all the information we need. And let me say, does anybody have any questions about it?
Is this what you're proposing in front of this CPC?
We're gonna propose in front of the CPC. We're gonna propose it in front of ARPA.
Okay.
And we may even do the Mass Trails Grant, but we're hoping one of them will accept it. And because the grants come and go, especially with the new governor. So we want to have the feasibility study done. So if there's a grant that's proposed, we're ready to go. That's one reason why we were going to bring it in front of ARPA, because if we got the ARPA money, we would be ready to go in the spring. So, and there's a man named Don Byrne, and he is in Westboro, and he does a lot of trail work for the town of Westboro. And he's been working on bike trails for like 20, 30 years, and he's willing to help us with it because it will help Westboro connect to the Mass Central Rail Trail if we do our section. So, and there's two choices. There's stone dust, which is really packed down. I did a bike trail in Holliston. And they use stone dust, and I thought it was great.
Great.
Yeah, but the town may be leaning towards pavement for maintenance purposes, but I don't know. I thought the stone dust was pretty good. I think the stone dust, when I priced it back then, like two years ago, I think it was like $22,000 a mile, where pavement was like a million dollars a mile. And we have 6.6 miles. But the feasibility study might look into that, too. But Don is going to help us with it if we agree to go with a design firm in Westboro. But if we don't, we'll go to Ben, and he may even help us with it if it goes to someone else. But I was just looking for support from the Planning Board. We actually voted on it last year.
I thought so.
Yeah, we did. And we approved it, and it went to CPC, but there were so many projects that we were told to wait. So here it is a year later already. So we figured we'd apply to CPC again. But it sounds like they still have a lot of projects, and I think they always will have a lot of projects.
Yeah.
So that's kind of why we were going for ARPA, too.
Bill, you have something?
Yeah, is this going to include the, the Aqueduct Bridge?
It will, but that would be a separate cost.
Yeah, the, the Aqueduct Bridge is actually already going to feasibility study. So it's actually preliminary engineering. So right now, I'm, I'm just working to get the contract signed, but Stan Tech was the firm that had done the structural engineering analysis prior. So we're interested in hiring them again, and the town was awarded CPC grants last year to finance the feasibility study. So this feasibility study will not include the bridge.
Oh, this is a different, but you're, the one you were just talking about.
Part of the trail, but it's not going to be part of this feasibility study. Or being done.
And even once this feasibility study is done, sometimes it's broken down into sections, so it's done in phases. Like there are certain areas in Northborough, like one of the big areas would be there's a bridge underneath Route 20 near the police station, and it's not high enough. So you'd probably have to go up on the road and around it, but the feasibility study will look into that. And then in the future, if you had a lot of money, then you could build a section underneath certain bridges. But the feasibility study can break it down into phases and sections. I figure we, we have to start it at some point, hopefully.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we'll take a vote, but also we did this letter last year. Is that something you still have on file, Laurie, that you could recycle so that you don't have to do extra work? Or do any one of us have it? Probably, I assume I might actually. I just know you have so much going on. I hate to have you draft something new.
Yes, I would appreciate if, if the letter is available. I am not sure where it would be located. I can look. Amy, do you happen to have that?
I can look, too. I have everything in my files. I'll just, I'll find it.
Okay.
Okay. So that'll just save some time there. All right, except you may have to change it because I think last year the vote was not, it was like four to one. I don't know if that's in the letter, but this, I guess it depends on how we vote. So we'll see.
Right, Michelle didn't want to vote for it.
Okay, so is there a motion to draft a letter of support for, from the Planning Board in support of the Aqueduct Multi-Use CPC Project?
So moved.
Second? Second. Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony? Oh, can't hear you there.
Aye, sorry.
There is an aye. So it's this time, it's unanimous. So we'll just, Amy, if you have that letter that you can share, that'd be great. Thanks for doing that and sticking with it. I'm going to jump over the bylaw amendments because I think that, I just want to get through the rest of our agenda and then jump back to that. Anything for Master Plan Implementation Committee meeting? Looks like that's coming up this week.
Thursday.
20th. Anything exciting there?
Yeah, so we're going to be meeting with our consultant for the first time, so that's Weston and Sampson. So at that meeting, they're going to go over the schedule and the, you know, the various submission requirements and when those are going to be due. And they're going to be giving some preliminary information about the survey results that have been received to date. So it should be a good meeting, and then we're going to briefly go over the Complete Streets Public Meeting that was held last night. Which if you're interested, I can just give you that update. So we did have good attendance at last night's meeting, which was before the, the Board of Selectmen. And we've got some valuable feedback. So we gave a presentation about the 25 projects that had been proposed to date. There was a recommendation to add a project to the list, which was Brigham Hill. And then we asked folks to give us their top three out of the projects that were presented. And we were able to get some good feedback from that. I think overwhelmingly, the top-rated projects were those that were in the downtown. The Aqueduct Project also came up with a number of votes. And Allen Street Sidewalk was mentioned a few times by the participants. So where we're going from now is there's various evaluation criteria, which essentially were gleaned from, this is a program that is overseen by Mass DOT. And so they have interpreted the Complete Streets Program in their special way. And so the evaluation criteria is based on what their priorities are. So now we're going to take those 26 projects and we're going to rank them on the base, basis of the evaluation criteria that they have set as well as some additional criteria that we are putting forward, such as a public interest, as well as it being a shovel-ready project and it being a project that can receive grant funding from the Complete Streets Program, as well as additional programs like Mass Works and the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. So once we have ranked all of the projects, we're going to go back to the Board of Selectmen, and we're going to share with them the listing, the ranking of the projects, ask for their blessing for the way they've been ranked, and then submit to Mass DOT for final approval. Based on prior experience, they do sometimes come back with comments and they want changes. So if that's the case, we will make the changes that they tell us to make. And then once we receive the final approval, we will be eligible to apply for up to $500,000 in grant funding, which is not competitive. And so we will be able to submit projects. There are two different funding grounds per year. However, the maximum that any community can get is 500,000 within a four-year timeframe. So it sounds like a lot of money until you do construction projects. And then you realize 500,000 really doesn't go very far. So we're going to do the best we can. That will be a fantastic opportunity to leverage grants, funds from a variety of grant programs. So that's probably the way we'll get the biggest bang for our buck.
Any questions?
I'm assuming that MPIC will see these as they're coming through and, and be kept up to date on them?
So MPIC has already provided their feedback.
Right.
So we won't be going back to MPIC because we already got that feedback. So the Approval Authority is actually the Board of Selectmen, not MPIC.
Right.
But we are going to take the comments that we received from MPIC as well as last night, as well as from the 808 survey responses that we received. All of those are going to, those comments are going to be part of the evaluation process. But the really important thing to remember is the projects that check the most boxes. So public interest is just one of the boxes. So the projects that check the most boxes are going to be the top priorities. So they'll get the, the biggest billing. And then the projects that don't check a lot of boxes, even though they may be very much desired by the community, if they're not projects that are going to be grant-eligible, those are going to fall to the bottom of the list.
Okay.
On purpose. So, so that we want to make sure that the projects that are going to be most competitive for grant money are in the top 10.
And are you, are you spearheading Complete Streets? Is that under your wing?
Me?
Yes.
Yep, so it's really Scott and I working together. And Fred is our, you know, kind of rounding out the groups. So it's the three of us who have been involved with the brainstorming, the identification of the projects. And then we've been working with our consultant. They've been super helpful with coming up with the cost estimates and giving us some suggestions about what ought to be done on each project.
Thanks for driving that forward. We've been asking about that for a long time. So it's great to see finally coming to fruition. Any other questions or thoughts on that? All right, exciting. Any subcommittee updates tonight?
We had an application for groundwater for 80 Main Street. The property currently had, well, it has two structures on it. One of them burned down, which is not conforming. One of them burned down many years ago, so it's no longer grandfathered in. And the applicant wants to, in the same footprint of that burned-down building, replace it with a new structure. I believe he's going to rent it. And so it's going to the ZBA for review because it's not conforming. From a groundwater perspective, it meets the calculations. So while we didn't approve it, we just allowed, we said the conditions are for the ZBA to consider this and pass it along, and it'll be in front of them next.
Okay, great. Any other subcommittee updates? Okay, well, actually, speaking of then, we also have this, the letter to the ZBA, Consider Letter to the ZBA Regarding 80 Main Street. So I guess that's a good segue. So Laurie, for this one, you had sent us a copy of your letter of recommendations. Did everyone have a chance to read this? So usually with, they must, there's just a use, a use variance or a site plan in front of the?
It's a use variance.
Yeah. Okay, so we usually only do a technical review of a site plan, right? Not a use variance.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you've done in the past.
So I'm trying to think, is there anything with, that stood out to board members or anything we'd want to comment on for consideration to the ZBA hearing next Tuesday? Is it the 20, you wrote down here, the 25th? So it's next Tuesday.
I mean, I thought Laurie wrote a great letter, so I support her letter, but I don't know if we have to write anything in. You know, we don't have to send anything in writing. I don't, I don't know if it would make any difference, in my opinion.
I agree. I think her letter pretty much covers the areas of applicability for us to have spoken about and recommend.
Okay. Bill?
I do have, well, I don't know if I should talk about it. Because in the past, with the previous plan- With the previous planner, we were told we couldn't talk of an applicant in front of the ZBA unless they were here. So, I don't know.
Is that just when we're doing the technical review of the site plan, though? I thought that was only when we're doing a technical review. If we were to review the site plan. We'd have to have them there to ask questions or whatever the case.
Yep. Yep, so I just didn't know what. What we could talk about.
Well, did you have anything to add, or does the letter cover what you, or you just?
My only thing, and I don't know if we want to add in the letters, it would just be concerning to me. If it was allowed, because we've had other applicants come in front of us that want to do similar things. When there's not enough frontage, they want to add multiple houses on their lot, and. We've told them that it's not allowed, which it isn't allowed, so I guess that's why he's going for variance. I'm just afraid of the precedence it would set if it was approved. Because all these other people who've come to us are now gonna get in line for the ZBA. But I don't know if that's something we want to put into a letter. Or I thought Lori's letter was good, too, so I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, no, I agree with Amy. I think, you know, Lori's letter is good, but I'm really concerned about the precedence that this sets. You know, people could almost get around. The rules that we have for duplexes by building two separate homes. Right? And, and get around all of that. Regulation that we have for duplexes. By just going to the ZBA, getting a use variance.
Do you think it helps Lori for us to make a comment, or?
Is that something you could just verbalize if it's only one thing as of now, or? Absolutely, you're muted, you're muted there.
I have actually. Spoken with the ZBA Chairman. And we have talked about precedents. I don't wanna really go into too much detail. On a public meeting, but. Certainly, that's something that we're examining as far as this application is concerned. And future use variance applications, so. If, if you want to submit a letter, then certainly I'm happy to do so on your behalf. I just need some, some direction as to whether you would want that or not. And there is also the possibility of. Members attending the public hearing, and that way you can listen to the presentation. And if you have concerns, you can certainly verbalize those concerns at that time during the public hearing. It is a public hearing, so you are absolutely entitled to submit comments, whether they're in writing or orally.
Great. Is there anything that we want to submit as a board? Does everybody, are we in agreement on the? First of all, it sounds like everyone agrees in support of Lori's recommendations. Is that true? Anyone not in support? And then it seems that, is everybody in support of questioning the precedents?
Or just considering the precedence it would?
Considering, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that something that we want to put into a memo, that we support Lori's? The town planners' recommendation, and also would like to submit? The consideration for precedence and leave it at that? I mean, we don't have, does anyone have anything otherwise? I think. Lori?
I think a letter like that, just simply stay and keep it short and sweet. Mentioning precedences would be good.
Yeah, really. I don't think there's anything else that really comes. I think your letter, as always, Lori, is super comprehensive and covers. Most of what I think any one of us would pick out, so. Okay, so does that sound okay? Just a quick, do you want me to draft a quick? It's just as, well, it's like two lines.
Sure. Yeah, you know, what I can do is I can write something up, and how about I email that to you, Carrie? And you give it your blessing or modify it as you see fit.
Okay. Um, let's see. Hope to someone, was that a chair or does someone have something? No, okay.
No, that's my dog.
That's what I was thinking, it sounded like.
Letting his presence be known.
Oh, and we already talked about Complete Streets. So I think we've covered everything on our agenda except zoning bylaw amendments, so. Why don't we dedicate the rest of our time to that? Lori, thank you. You sent out. A summary of where we are today for some of the things that you've drafted.
Yes, and I, I was hoping to get further along with this, but the last couple of weeks have been exceedingly busy. So I wasn't able to get as far as I had thought that I'd be able to get at our last planning board meeting. So I'm happy to explain these one by one. If you want to jump around. And go over certain articles and not others, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Oops. I'm sorry, I just missed, you actually sent me a draft of motions that I did not take advantage of. I just see that now, sorry about that.
That's okay. Before we forget, we have that A and R. You want to do that?
Yes, please. So hold on, let me make, let me make good use of this document. Okay, so we had last, at the last meeting, we had an A and R plan that came before us. And we had voted to endorse it, but it had a, the wrong revision date on it, or the plans that we got had the. Right revision date on it. So the motion that we're considering tonight is to endorse the A and R plan for seventy-five Ridge Road. Dated May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, last revised on October fifth. Prepared by Moran Cameron Group Incorporated. So the change is that October fifth.
Can I say so?
I'm sorry. No, sorry, back it up. I gotta reconsider the first.
Thank you.
First, we need to reconsider the motion that we made to approve it for July nineteenth. So the dates are changing from July nineteenth to October fifth. Same plan we reviewed. It's an issue only with the recorded date. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay.
No.
All right, so is there a motion to reconsider the motion at the October fourth Planning Board Meeting to endorse A and R Plan for seventy-five Ridge Road? Dated May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, last revised July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, prepared by the Moran Cameron Group Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Lily?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, now is there a motion to endorse the A and R Plan for seventy-five Ridge Road dated May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, last revised October fifth, twenty-twenty-two? Prepared by the Moran Cameron Group Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Lily?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. So that should take care of that. Did I miss any other motions? Nope, I think that's it. Okay, so moving along then to our bylaws that we have. I am going to. Jump to, why don't we start with? The. Classification of uses. So I'm gonna skip, I'm gonna skip the first two. The first two articles. And jump to the zoning bylaw section seven zero five zero two zero, classification of uses, C four C. So this one is related to, does everyone have their sheet up? So this one's pretty short. This one is related to the. Maximum gross floor area of accessory dwelling units. And Lori, could you remind, I don't remember this one from, is this a house cleaning on your part, or did we talk about this before?
This is actually a brand-new one. It came out of a conversation that I had with the building inspector. So one of the circumstances that has kind of come up. Is the case where the single-family home on a parcel is very, very large. So let's say that the single-family home is four thousand square feet. So right now, the zoning bylaw says that the maximum gross floor area of any accessory dwelling unit. Shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the gross floor area, the existing dwelling. Or seven hundred feet, whichever is greater. So if you have a very large, single-family home. Then essentially what this enables you to do is build another, single-family home. So there are single-family homes that could potentially be a thousand square feet. Certainly, I am aware of some ranches that are in the neighborhood of nine hundred square feet. So I'm not sure that that is the intent of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So. What I suggest doing. As an alternative is to increase. So instead of having, it be seven hundred square feet, increase it to eight hundred square feet. But have that be an absolute maximum, unless. You know, they, they ask for special waiver. So that way you are discouraging folks from building another, single-family home. On the same parcel as a single-family home. So it's kind of the issue we're talking about with the use variance. Where you could potentially have two, single-family homes on the same parcel. So the accessory dwelling, by nature, in most communities, is an apartment. So oftentimes, it's used as a rental. It could be for an in-law apartment. It could be for a nanny. It could be for. Just rental income, an adult child. But the intent is not to create two, single-family homes on a parcel.
Okay, so we spent quite a bit of time on the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Last year or the year before, I can't remember. But what we talked about at the time was. Making sure that if, for people with disabilities who needed live-in care, was that big enough for them? If they had to have some, it was eight hundred square feet, big enough, and maybe it is, I don't know. At the time, there were laws being passed through the state that was going to push for compliance when it came to. Accessory dwelling for people with disabilities. And I don't know where that landed. In state law, if it ever went anywhere at all. I don't know if Bob happened to mention that, because we had quite a few discussions over it. Does anyone else remember these discussions? No.
Remember, we definitely talked about accessory dwellings. And I think you wanted to make the size bigger, but in the end.
We didn't, because we worried about the same thing you're talking about now. But I wondered why we, I wonder why we didn't just clean this up then.
I don't know.
All right. So I don't have a problem with this. I'm just wondering what happened.
I know, you know, with most of the accessory dwelling bylaws that I'm familiar with. So you can do an accessory dwelling that's attached to the single-family dwelling. Or you could do an accessory dwelling that's attached to an accessory structure. So for example, if you have a two-car garage, you could do an accessory dwelling above the garage or connected to the garage. It didn't necessarily have to be above. It could be inside a barn. So there are a whole host of various options. But this bylaw does not specify that it has to be part of an accessory structure. So the way it's written is it could be a standalone, single-family house. And like I said, my concern was that if you have an estate. I mean, if, if your intent is to allow kind of like a gatehouse, then that's your intent. But. I, I just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention, that the way it's currently worded. Is we may very well have two, single-family houses on a parcel.
I don't, I don't think we had considered that possibility when we discussed this. But I can see where that would certainly have. Some wiggle room, the way it's written.
Yeah.
And we do have conditions where the owner of the dwelling shall occupy one of the units.
And that's another thing. That's really, really hard to enforce. So you can enforce that at the time that the permit is being requested. But once the building permit is issued, there really isn't a way to police that.
Okay, so I mean, I'm not, I'm not against it. I will go back to my notes to see what our discussion was, because there was. Something, or I wonder what we even, now I can't recall what we changed last time. Either way, can we, if it was last year, does it matter if we go after the same bylaw in the following year? I guess not, I was thinking.
No, because this is a modification. So the way the law works is that if you submit a zoning bylaw change. And then it gets denied by town meeting, you can't come back for two years. So this is a completely new change. So that it wouldn't apply here.
And I think what we did got approved, so.
Yep, it did. Okay.
Thankfully, we have many months to discuss. Because we're doing this so early in October, so.
Right.
It's just an introductory discussion at this point, and certainly we can continue the conversation. Carrie, you want to do your research, and there is also. The conversation we can have about. What your intent was as to whether you're okay with it being, you know, a standalone unit. In the back, kind of like eighty Main Street is proposing. Or whether you want it to be part of an accessory structure. I'm fine either way. I just want to make sure. That everybody understands that the possibility exists, that it'll just be. You know, a standalone dwelling unit in the backyard.
So far, the ones that have come in front of the ZBA. Were, and they all had to come in front of the ZBA, I think, recent ones, because I think we might have already made it bigger once. Because remember, they were coming from the ZBA for a lot of variances on size. Which is why we brought it up. It could have been even smaller before. But all of them have been above the garage so far. But I can see how you. Could see it as a separate detached building.
Okay. All right, so I will, I'm just looking at some of my notes from last year. We, we did have a conversation about how other towns are making sure that you didn't have that situation where people turned it into something. That wasn't the intent of the bylaw. And at the time, we actually put in nine hundred square feet. But it was, there were a lot of conditions or restrictions around it. So you couldn't, it couldn't be occupied with more than two people, or have more than two bedrooms. You couldn't transfer into separate ownership from the primary residence. So I'll, I'll send this to Lori, so you have it, but then with the whole board for that matter, to refresh everybody's memory, but. I think it's worth keeping on the radar for sure.
Awesome.
Any other thoughts on that one? Okay, so the next one here is the zoning bylaw section seven zero nine zero two zero, Site Design Standard C six. And this looks like, oh, it's the underground utilities. So this is a new one, too.
I've been talking to you folks about that for a while. I, I really want something in the regulations that specify that. Telephone cable and electric services has to be placed below ground within conduits, so. That is my effort to address that concern.
You said most towns already do that, right?
I have never seen a town in like two thousand. In this century that allows above-ground utilities, so. That was, that was really surprising when I came across that near zoning.
Wait, so we previously just didn't have anything that accounted for it at all. We had no stance on it, so people could do what they wanted.
Yeah, so they could, uh, they could put the utilities underground, or they could put them above ground. Um, but, you know, it's kind of unsightly. Of course, I don't know how you feel about utility boxes, but there are many benefits to having the utilities below ground, uh, certainly in a storm event. Then you don't have to worry about the power lines being knocked down by trees. But it also, in my opinion, looks better.
Do those towns that have been mandating them have anything in their um, on their books about if you are changing things on your property that, that then has to become part of the site plan change?
So it really depends. So if, um, so if you have an existing structure and you're proposing a use that triggers special permit, but you're not making any exterior changes, then they would not be required to put the utilities below ground. So it would only be in circumstances where they're doing like a major addition, like in the case of one hundred barefoot, that was my suggestion. So in those circumstances, I would absolutely recommend, if they're digging up the parking lot and the landscaping anyway, let's put those utilities below ground. And then we can require them to put screening um, in some cases, depending upon where the utility boxes are. You would want pollards. Um, but usually they can locate them in such a way that they can be screened by view, uh, from view with, uh, attractive plantings and people don't really even notice them, honestly.
And you're talking about this as residential throughout the entire town?
So it would only, it would only be triggered if they have to go through site plan review. So if you're doing a, single-family home, no, it wouldn't be triggered. However, if you're doing a duplex, um, which triggers special permit and site plan review, yep, you'd have to do it below ground. So, uh, any, anything that reaches the threshold of triggering site plan review would be required to put them underground.
What about downtown?
So downtown, um, you know, of course, when I did the downtown project in Millbury, that was a hot-button issue, because there were folks who really wanted the utilities. We have, uh, part of our downtown has the utilities buried. And the other part of the downtown does not. Um, to bury utilities in this day and age is super, super pricey. If they're already digging up the site anyway, then to just carry the utility underground from the telephone pole to the new structure is not very expensive. Um, it's the burying of the utilities that are on the telephone poles, especially if you have transformers. Um, and you have three-phase wiring, that's a very pricey endeavor, so it costs millions. Uh, depending upon the stretch. Um, but that's why, you know, like, at least if you can have them buried from the, the from the telephone pole to the brand-new building, like I said, it, it's not very expensive.
Any other questions on that one?
We even did it on the last duplex and they didn't complain at all. I don't, it's not a big deal, it doesn't seem like it.
It is anticipated. Because every other town, so you know, when these developers come in, the engineers come in, they anticipate it. So they probably come to Northborough and they're like, yay, we don't have to do it. Um, but every other town they work in, they have to do it.
I'd love to get rid of them downtown.
Yeah.
It's too bad they didn't do it when the, they redid the Main Street. It was, it wasn't that much back then. I don't know why this Lockman didn't do it.
Well, the problem is that you also, so not only are you burying the, the main line, but then you also have to, um, address the services that are going to each building. So how, how do you pay for that? So is that something that, you know, you're gonna push on the property owners? Or, because also they may have to change the location and their panels and, and the like, so. Um, it's something that we chose not to do in, in Millbury. You know, back in the old days, in the eighties, there used to be grant funding to bury utilities, but the, it just doesn't exist anymore. So it was always taxpayer money that would have to pay for that.
Oh, okay, maybe it'll come back, who knows?
I think the only thing we really have to be careful of here is, um, you know, the, the light poles, right? So I know behind my house, it's stone. Um, they, it's all underground, right? And when they initially built the buildings, they had light poles for people to walk at night. And since they put in those light poles, they've all been destroyed. There's not a single one left. And nobody's replaced them, nobody's done anything. So now there's no lights for anyone to walk in that neighborhood. And, and that's where, you know, my kids and I go trick-or-treating. And, you know, it gets real hairy sometimes, especially when you get up near Cheryl Lane, oh, Cheryl Drive, up, up behind there. Um, it's really, really dark, because it's, everything's underground, there are no streetlights, so it's, there's no streetlights.
Well, that's not, so that has to do with the subdivision regs. And that's something that I would also like to update. So in circumstances where you're requiring the utilities to be placed underground, you're still requiring streetlights. This is just that they're not mounted on telephone poles.
Right.
Um, so what I like to see in residential neighborhoods is kind of those Cobra Head uh, streetlights that you see all over the place are not, uh, something that I actually like to see in residential neighborhoods. There are lots of residential options, um, that towns can go with that are more reasonable height. You could do twelve-foot tall, you could do eighteen-foot tall um, decorative LED streetlights that have more of like the lamppost look to them. And those would be installed within the right-of-way. So the, the powering, so the conduit to service those streetlights is buried and within the right-of-way. And so it's just like a regular streetlight. So in this circumstance, it would be owned by the town instead of national grid typically. Um, because national grid isn't too keen, they charge an arm and a leg if you're installing LED streetlights. Um, so in my opinion, it's better for the town to own them anyway, because you're saving a heck of a lot of money, because you don't have to replace the, um, bulbs as frequently as you do with the Cobra Head style HPS lights. Um, and also your electricity consumption is far lower than it is with your typical HPS uh, streetlight. So when we update our subdivision regs, we'll just specify that. That they still have to do streetlights, it's just gonna be these type of streetlights instead of tell, on telephone poles. And they look a heck of a lot better.
Right, but I think my point is, who takes care of the ones now?
The town.
But the town doesn't. The town's been told that these streetlights, one after another, over the years have been, you know, fallen down or taken out or whatever, and now there's nothing.
Um, well, that's a question for, so I'm not sure the specific circumstance in this neighborhood. Um, so national grid is the electricity provider. So either they own the streetlights, or the town owns the streetlights. So it's either one or the other. So it's either going to national grid and saying, hey, you gotta replace these streetlights. So the national grid, if national grid owns the streetlights, then the town is paying for powering those streetlights, unless it's a private project. Is it like a homeowners association neighborhood?
These ones were put in, in the, I believe in the seventies.
Okay, I would reach out to, to Scott to, to find out the situation about these streetlights. Uh, cause like I said, they're either town-owned or they're national grid-owned. And if they're national grid-owned, then it's a matter of just saying, hey, you know, this streetlight was damaged, it needs to be replaced. And then national grid comes out and replaces the streetlight. So.
But do we want to include that in our bylaw?
So the.
In that line, that it has to be maintained.
So the way it works in subdivisions, so it depends on whether it's privately owned or whether it's publicly owned. If it's privately owned, then absolutely the homeowners association is responsible for the maintenance of the streetlights and for paying the electric bills. If it's publicly owned, then it's either owned by national grid or it's owned by the DPW. Uh, those are the two, two options. Um, so I, I'll also follow up with him and, and find out the situation, because I'm not sure about streetlight ownership in town, how that works.
Okay, thank you.
I know, I know a lot of towns, what they're doing is they're purchasing the streetlights from national grid so that then they can convert them to LED streetlights. So many communities throughout Massachusetts have done that. Saves a lot of money. But of course, changes to the regulations affect projects moving forward. So they won't affect this, uh, subdivision in the nineteen seventies.
Okay, um, and then we have, anything else on that one? So I don't want to cut that off. Okay, um, the rezoning one sixty-seven Main Street, White Cliffs. So this is rezoning from residential C and placing it in Business East.
So if I can, I, I did prepare, prepare a lovely little sketch right before this meeting, so if I can share my screen, that I can bring that up. Alright, so, uh, this is the White Cliffs property. So you can see that, um, the, the front portion of the White Cliffs property is within the Business East District, which provides a lot of flexibility, a lot of, um, uses that, uh, would be appropriate for the White Cliffs mansion. However, the building itself is located in the Residential C District, which is primarily a, single-family home district, very low density. It doesn't allow, uh, multifamily homes. So it really is tying the hands of, uh, what can ultimately be done with this property, especially since it's been vacant for seven years. Um, so what I've been talking about with the White Cliffs Committee, as well as the, uh, consultant that came to speak to us last month, is rezoning the entirety of this parcel to Business East. I think it would make the reuse of this property, uh, much more feasible. So that's the idea.
How long has it been since it hasn't been used as a residence? It's been forty years, correct?
From my understanding, it was converted into a restaurant in nineteen forty-two or forty-six, somewhere around there.
Yeah.
So it's been eighty years.
Eighty years, yeah, okay.
And actually, before that, it was actually owned by this, uh, Greek.
Fraternal organization, something, yeah, yeah. I remember that. So it's been well over eighty, maybe even a hundred years, that it's not been used as a residence.
So of the fifty-some-odd contacts that Brett had in his rolodex, there was only one individual who was interested in using it as a, uh, single-family home. And even that individual wanted some sort of home occupation event option. So, uh, the benefit of, uh, the timing is that the White Cliffs RFP is currently out. And the bids are due in December. So we will have plenty of time before town meeting to find out who's interested in the property, if anybody, and what they would like to use it as. Um, and the RFP, I did articulate our interest in rezoning the property to Business East. Uh, because I thought that that would enhance interest in the property.
Is there any way this could backfire at all? Like, it could be used to do something we didn't intend to be done with this property?
Um, you know, I, I don't really think so. You know, I went through the use table to see what the uses were in Business East. And, uh, there really is a huge number of options, but none of them are gonna be harmful, I don't think. Like, uh, there are no industrial uses that are allowed. There are office uses, uh, there are a number of uses that would be allowed, uh, by special permits. So, uh, the, the buy-right uses, I don't think will be harmful to the property in any way. Like, for example, one of the buy-right uses is a bed and breakfast. That would be a neat use, a restaurant excluding alcoholic beverages. If you wanted to have alcoholic beverages, then that's a special permit from the CBA. You could do a deli, a sandwich shop, a pizza shop. You can do a brewery, which I know is a, a big interest. You can do catering service. So there's all sorts of office uses. You could do medical or dental office, personal service establishments, educational uses. Even a funeral home would require a special permit.
Would a building like that, or if, if they were to keep something that large, would it have to have one primary use? And then could have a multitude of other uses, or does that make sense too?
There are a number of mixed uses that are allowed. So you could do an artist-live-work unit, that would be a special permit from the ZBA. You could do vertical mixed-use development by right. Horizontal mixed-use development would not be allowed. So vertical, of course, is up and down.
Right.
So, um, you could do, let's see.
Why would horizontal not be allowed? What is, what is the purpose of looting something like that?
I don't know, that's, uh, that's before my time, so I, I can't comment on the rationale of that.
Can you tell me where you're looking? Cause I can't seem to find that.
I'm looking at page seven forty-six.
Cause that could be a sticking point, to be honest with you.
Limited mixed-use building, I'm gonna see what that means, cause I'm not exactly sure. So limited mixed-use building means a sealed, a single building with a business professional or medical office and one dwelling unit. Not including a home occupation. So vertical mixed-use is a building in which the ground floor facing the street is used primarily for business uses. And the other ground floor in the upper space is designed or intended for residential or office uses.
If it were office, what would the height restriction be?
So the height restriction, so of course, you know, it's already a very tall building.
Right.
Um, but just bear with me a minute.
Now.
Now, in the res- residential C District, the height limit is uh, thirty-five feet. And in Business East, the height limit is forty-five feet, which I imagine is more in line with the current height of the building. Cause it has three levels.
Right. Okay.
With forty-five feet, with that, you could get four floors, do you think? If it was a commercial building? Business?
I, I, I think it depends on the architecture. Um, you, you could. I, I'm, I'm trying to think about the White Cliffs in particular. And the ceilings are super, super high. So I would not think that you'll be able to get an extra floor on the White Cliffs, unless of course you're talking brand new construction.
Yeah, I'm thinking brand new.
And there's no way to do brand new, right? Unless it burns down? Cause there's a conservation restriction?
Yeah, so if the town were to sell the property, because uh, there is absolutely an interest in putting a preservation restriction on the property, because it was originally purchased with CPA funds. So it's actually an obligation. Um, so the reason why the preservation restriction has not yet been attached to the property is because uh, there was uh, they wanted to, to have some flexibility. Because I'm sure with, who is going to acquire the property? And what the end use will be. So they would, don't want to make it so limiting that there's going to be absolutely no interest in this property and is eventually just gonna get demolished, fall apart on its own. Um, so it's my understanding, is standing that the, the goal is to find somebody that uh, folks can agree to partner with or to convey the property to. And then the preservation restriction will be designed to keep in mind the end use of the property. So it'll be restrictive enough to protect the most vital elements. Um, mostly likely having to do with the woodwork. And you know, the most special historic features, but flexible enough to enable them to do an addition should they desire.
Which is similar to what the restaurant did before, right? They built a kitchen off the side or?
Yeah, so the, the first addition was the, the small kitchen addition uh, towards the front. And of course, the second floor, they took out the walls uh, separating the various bedrooms. And they made that pretty much one wide open space. Um. So they, they want to provide them with the flexibility to make sure that the, the business is gonna work. And that, so there may be an interest in adding walls on the second floor again, uh, to create partitions. It's hard to say at this point.
So does the preservation restriction apply to the original parts?
It would be the original part.
The whole building.
You, no, no, no. I don't think anybody wants to protect those ugly additions.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, they, they definitely are not in keeping with the character of a historic building, so.
Okay, so.
I think pretty much everybody agrees that uh, anything can be done to those additions.
Yeah.
Probably that would be a benefit.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on this one? Okay, um, let's see. So then, uh, I think that's the end of your, well, you've prepared already Laurie, but we had a whole bunch. I want to um, make sure we just refresh our memories on what we have um, out for consideration in the world.
Yeah, I've been keeping a running tally. Um, so let me uh, let me grab that document that I have that talks about the things that I haven't yet completed yet. Um.
So why can't we get it started? We have the um, multifamily overlay. So we have that, is that something we actually think we can get to this year?
You know, I um, I am thinking that we probably won't get far enough for this town meeting.
Okay, so how do we want, uh, I guess along those lines, we just got notification or reminder about our LPA hours, so. Maybe as we go through these, we keep in mind how we want to use those LPA hours. Is there any proposals from your side, Laurie, on how to use those hours?
Well, I would like to start the process with uh, CMR PC of working towards the multifamily bylaw, but I, I don't know if it'll be ready for prime time, ready for the town meeting. Remember, we have until December two thousand twenty-four.
Okay.
Um, so we could go forward at the spring town meeting, or we could uh, go forward at the following spring town meeting.
Okay.
Um, we'll, oh, go ahead. I have, this is uh, on a, a little bit of a different note, but I have a question on um, whether it would come under a bylaw or uh, another form of, of process is having more than one application before a board at the same time. Is that something that you have or haven't done in the past, Laurie, or had, had to manage?
I like to have, uh, so for example, normally when we do our pre-application reviews uh, with applicants, if they have a lot of uh, wetlands concerns, then we strongly recommend that they file with the Conservation Commission simultaneously with the Planning Board. Uh, so that, that's because there's overlapping jurisdiction. Um, so of course they have their stormwater bylaw, and they also have the wetland bylaw that they're overseeing.
Mm-hmm.
So we want to make sure that we're operating on the same plan, because otherwise if they go to Conservation Commission first, um, and then planning next, planning may require some modifications. And then they'll have to go back to Conservation Commission to get approval for those modifications and vice versa. Um, so simultaneous uh, submittals is strongly recommended in certain cases.
I, I was actually thinking more of site plans for one applicant, there are two different applications that way. Have you ever had that happen? And is there anything in your town previously that has either allowed it or disallowed it?
So you mean you have the same developer that has two different applications simultaneously before the board? For two different properties, is that what you're saying?
Same property, two different plans. I'm just curious if there's something that could be done to um, avoid that.
Now, is, so what I would, I always recommend, so a lot of this is taken care of in pre-application review. So uh, what we'll do is we'll sit down, we'll have like a roundtable discussion with an applicant. And we'll tell the applicant the various permits that are triggered.
Right.
And I always will recommend that they file once for all the permits that they need.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely don't want to see them file for say, site plan review first and then come back later for this special permit. Cause that's just a pain. So then they end up having one decision that addresses all of the permits that they need from say, the planning board or the CBA. So I haven't had that experience. The only exception was where um, you know, back in my last town, we had a, uh, the, the stormwater bylaw was actually in the jurisdiction of planning board. And originally, when they had gone through site plan review, they had thought that they were going to be below the threshold for stormwater management bylaw. And then they made modifications to the plan, which triggered the stormwater bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So after they got site plan approval, they had to come back later for stormwater bylaw. But that was an exceptional case and not something that I would recommend ever.
Okay.
Okay, um, so we also then had the industrial rezone we talked about. Do you still, do you have this on your list as well, Laurie?
Yeah, so um, what I have on my list is prohibiting the residential and industrial use combination.
So wait, we.
Talking about.
No, no, I do, I have that as two separate items, but could you remind me, what is the residential industrial use combo one?
So remember the case of, I think it was one hundred and eighty barefoot, where they were interested in doing the um, construction yard on the same parcel where they had a single family home?
Yes.
You know, generally, I personally don't like having single family homes and industrial uses on the same parcel. Zoning was actually created to separate out industrial uses from residential uses, because they often are not compatible for a variety of reasons.
Hmm.
So that's something that I wanted to talk to you of, of folks about. You know, a lot of times the zoning bylaws that enable uh, kind of, it's like harkening back to the mill days when uh, the mill manager would live next door to the mill. So he was like the caretaker.
Yep.
But in this day and age, that really isn't necessary. So that's what I was talking about. Now, maybe you can clarify what you were referring to.
Okay, so I was referring to, well, first of all, the, the board is still interested in that one. Okay, oops, I can't.
Makes sense.
Actually, Laurie, do you mind not sharing for a second? Cause I can't see it at the same time.
Sure.
Thank you. There we go, okay. Um, so I was talking about, you know, we talked about how we can make a better transition from residential to industrial. And in the past, we've talked about making different rings of uses, um, and intensity would be from like the low intensity would be the first kind of closest to residential, going up to the higher intensity as you get further away. I don't know if we have time to do that in full. We seem to always run out of time, if that's not easy to do. At a minimum, I think we should consider the buckets where things keep falling in, the catchall buckets that, that like a light manufacturing where our version of light manufacturing seems to be different than what we sometimes see fall into that category. And we're putting things that we didn't anticipate next to residents. So I don't know what the board feels. Do you remember this? Well, I'm sure you remember it as part of our, quite a few cases, actually.
Mm-hmm, I do.
After what we were trying to do, or what, do we have a, what's our preference one way or the other, to try to figure out?
Well, I, I think at least start to try to get a handle on something like that would be a step in the right direction, whether we accomplish it this year or the next year. I think that that certainly would align with the master plan and um, begin to address what I think are some forthcoming scenarios or situations.
Mm-hmm. So Laurie, what do you, feasibly, what's, what's something feasible for this year? Is it like, try to you make sure that our definitions are properly um, set up so that it matches our intent? Or is it really just about developing? How do we make that first? How do we smooth our transitions, I guess? Maybe if even something we haven't thought about that we could do.
Um, you know, when I was thinking about this year, I wanted to tackle kind of the problem areas. So the areas that I saw is kind of like, oops, you know, let's um, uh, I understand that, you know, folks have been interpreting it this way for a very long period of time, but the bylaw doesn't necessarily say, doesn't really back up uh, the interpretation. Uh, so that was kind of what I was envisioning for this year, like correcting um. So in the common driveway bylaw, when we were talking about the references to this nineteen sixty-seven uh, construction standard for roadways. Uh, so I wanted to clean that up. Um, Fred went through and uh, submitted to, to me yesterday uh, his suggested changes to the stormwater language. Uh, to clarify that, I'd like to kind of shift gears for the next couple of weeks. And uh, since we're going to be going forward with changes to the rules and regs of the planning board, I thought that there were some additional changes that I would like to make um, to clarify some of the, some middle requirements and uh, just the overall design of uh, certain sites. So that kind of has come to the forefront uh, because of the whole interpretation issue uh, with the stormwater regulations.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to address that sooner rather than later. So I guess I, I would rather not do a comprehensive change to the zoning map at this point. Maybe we can hold off on that until next year.
What about um, at least looking at the definite, if we talk further as a board of the definitions that we think are leading to the biggest problems? Like for example, I, in the past, we've looked at contractors yard, like some of those buckets that catch all are catching more than we intended. So that was something we tried to fix in the past. I think light manufacturing is used as a catchall bucket that we got um, in trouble. Um, I don't know if anyone has any other reason. Those are, oops, sorry guys.
Fire alarm, is somebody cooking?
Probably my daughter's cooking. Um. So just the catch, I don't know, any other buckets that we, or maybe it's, if it's just something, if not the whole board feels that way, that's okay. I'm just focused on.
Yeah, no, I think you're right, Carrie, that, that light, that light manufacturing one is one that definitely has to be dealt with.
Mm-hmm.
Because it is just, you know, maybe we need to, to look through and find if there are any others in there.
Okay, so then, so there are two separate ones, so maybe we can think about if, if, if there are any definitions. That was my thing, um, that's what I had for industrial, but I also had that residential industrial use combo. Um, let's see. I also have um, the setback, so we had a, Amy, you brought up the five feet from the side lot line setback for, where is about impervious surface buffer? Was that something that you had brought, is that still on your list, Laurie?
Yeah, actually, I, I um, wrote up some language right before this, this meeting uh, that I, I didn't think it was fair to share with you tonight. So I'll be prepared to discuss that at our next meeting.
Okay, and so is that, is that one in the same, Amy, the five foot impervious surface buffer and the side lot setback? Are those two different things or the same?
I think it's the same thing.
Okay, um, with the utilities things, we looked at the White Cliffs, we looked at. Um, I have minimum area requirement for groundwater. Is that something Fred?
Yes, so I've made a crack at that. And what I quickly realized is that it's really difficult to come up with the appropriate wording. So I spoke to Fred about it. And he and I are gonna spend some time next week brainstorming how exactly to address uh, the, the area situation, because um. Uh, the, the area situation because um. He has kind of a, a different interpretation of uh, the, the regulation than I do. Um, so I really wanna talk through the interpretation. So that we can kind of get, get on the same page there and really discuss. What the ultimate point is, like what are we really trying to accomplish with this bylaw? Is this a uh, growth management tool? Or is this a um. A tool designs really protect the opera for, so. We still have to do some back and forth about that. Like I said, the, the goal is to come up with some language next week. That we can share with you at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Uh, then we had the signs, just the, it looks like the definitions for internal versus internally versus externally. And I think Bill, that's something you brought up before.
So one thing, uh, remember that if you want to go forward with the same bylaw as last year. If uh, there's like that two-year requirement. So if we want to present something that was previously presented. We have to do it in a different way because last year it did not get approved.
Yeah, I think this was just separating the, the definition, right? It's, it's not really. A- all it is is defining what they are, it's not changing anything in the actual, cause I think last year we were trying to change. You know, not only add the definition, but change also what the, what the requirements were. Um, and this is just, you know, keeping the same requirements is just, you know, adding the definition so that we can define what an external sign and what an internal sign is.
Okay, yeah, I can definitely uh, include that for the next meeting.
Okay, um, and then we talked about making it as a, a size based on a percentage of the building. So Amy, that's something you added to that. I don't think we wanted that last year. Is that something, because it was silly in some cases, you brought up some cases in Northborough Crossing where that was kind of a silly bylaw.
Yeah, that had to do with wall signs. I think the ZBA is always getting requirement, they're getting variances. Because the wall at Wegmans is a lot bigger than a wall downtown.
Yes, I, I can work on that absolutely with the building inspector.
Okay, let's see, um. Oh, we talked about possibly putting in the full chart, oh, like Amy, last year, we never went to town meeting with it, but you created. A chart so that somebody could easily look at what the size requirements were for each. So I don't know if we even still have that on file or if it's still applicable, if we want to bring it forward this year.
Right, I can do and send it to you, Lori, it's kind of, but I talked, even Bob agreed last year, it's like. The sign, and you probably do too, Lori, the sign by law is so much verbiage. That if it was just a chart, you could see the different zones and what was allowed without having to read four pages of writing.
Yes, that is, it's always helpful to have a table.
So I don't know if that's something that will take a long time to do. I did do a rough draft in one last year.
Hey, if you wanna.
Yeah, I'll see.
My, my little eager beaver. If you wanna, if you wanna take a crack at it and email that to me, that would uh, definitely expedite things. If you're willing.
Oh yeah, and would you use Word? I'm trying to think of how to make the table. I think I did it in Word or Excel.
Um, I would use Word. Um, if you could do like the, the create a table tool. And then you can, you can modify the format of the table really easy.
Okay, I'll take a crack at it.
If you need me to talk you through it, I can.
Okay.
Um, Anthony, you had suggested at one point, um, working on business cells. Is there anything speci- was there anything specific there or is that? Did we decide not to move forward on that one?
I don't know, I think, I mean, I don't have any like solid plans there. I think we talked about doing an overlay, talked about looking at um. Yeah, everything on Route nine, but I don't, I'm not certain. Amy, do you have any thoughts?
I was still thinking about the table. What were you guys talking about?
Business self overlay.
Oh yeah, and I don't know if we're doing too much in one year. We had always talked about where Wegmans is. It's an overlay and, but industrial is underneath, so we've always discussed as a board. As making that industrial area that borders Route nine. To be a business zone, like I went through it today and it'd be easy to change it to highway business because it adds in retail. It seemed to match the best. The only issue I saw is highway business adds in adult uses, so. I don't know if we want adult uses up by Wegmans.
We talked about is possibly having that, the location of the multifamily overlay.
Yeah.
So maybe we can kind of. Set that aside, because I really wanna, I don't want to lose potential opportunities for the multifamily overlay. So we can decide what we're doing with the multifamily overlay. And we could do the, that area simultaneously.
That sounds good.
Okay, um, Amy, you had downtown setbacks. Is, are there any other other setbacks there that you had for consideration?
I don't remember what that was.
Oh no, but, okay.
Uh, that's also for the downtown area, we're right now working with Weston and Sampson and RKG. On, on the, the visioning. And uh, kind of the, the marketing study and the overall downtown plan. So if we could just hold off, uh, because they're gonna be looking at uses. And they're gonna be looking at uh, building heights and uh, setbacks. So uh, we're gonna go through that whole series of visioning workshops in order to identify. Uh, what plan we want to go forward with. So if we could not touch the downtown until we have that plan completed, that'd be great.
Mm-hmm, sounds good. They must go through signs too.
Yeah, they're gonna be looking at everything, so they're gonna be looking at parking configuration. Uh, we're gonna be talking about uh, Route twenty and whether it's possible to allow on-street parking. Uh, we're gonna be talking about, like I said, the building heights, maybe going taller. Um, you know, making sure that uh. We have some flexibility with maybe not requiring every single parcel to have their own off-street parking lot. Uh, cause that really interferes with the pedestrian uh, friendly. Uh, composition of a downtown. If you have your, your buildings all separated by driveways for parking lots. It's, it's just not very pedestrian friendly. And of course, we're talking about um, maybe design standards. Um, you know, landscaping, lighting.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah, it's gonna be exciting. I, I, I can't wait to see what they come up with.
Okay, alright, so everyone okay? We're not gonna touch that?
Yeah, and one little add-on for anyone here who hasn't done it. The survey's still out there live.
When does the, when does the survey close?
Uh, mid-November. So if it, people can really get on, the last I heard, we only had about five hundred responses.
Do you have a goal?
I would like to match the complete street survey response rate of eight hundred and eight surveys.
I think we'll have to send out reminders.
Yeah, we forgot already.
Because I haven't even done it, you know?
Which survey is this? I thought you were talking about that one.
Downtown revitalization.
Oh, that one, okay.
Yeah. Alright, I'll have to send out reminders, because a lot of people like, oh yeah, I didn't do that yet.
I, I think they think it's, might be the same one.
Some people do, they're like, I just did that and it's not the same one.
Yeah, the complete street survey was the little five-question survey. And the other survey, the downtown survey is more meaty.
Oh, definitely, yeah. I, I did that one, so. Okay, um, then we talked about. Some of the regulations for the size of duplexes, because we're getting duplexes and size that. Um, are bigger than we would want, but we don't have anything in our bylaws that actually help us or help. The applicants understand what we're looking for, so to reduce that friction. We talked about um, either some sort of maximum height requirement or lot coverage requirement. Or some sort of floor area ratio, and I don't know if it equates to all three of those or one of those three or what? Do, Lori, do you, what do you think makes the most sense there? If we're, if we're looking to just make sure that duplexes aren't. You know, we don't have those huge duplexes next to small little homes.
Um, well, of course, the design guidelines, I think will go a long way of really explaining what we're looking for. Um. So of course, the, the lot coverage requirements for the residential districts. Uh, for single-family homes do not currently exist. So, um, there are also not lot coverage requirements for. Uh, duplexes. Um, it is typical to have lot coverage requirements for everything. Um, so for single-family homes, because you could very well in a community like Northborough end up with a six thousand square foot. Um, single-family home on a parcel. Um. So. I mean, is that something you want to tackle? Um, I. If you, if you want to have a lot coverage requirement. I, I probably wouldn't discriminate against sing- uh, two families versus single families. I'd probably just apply it to everybody. A typical lot coverage requirement is thirty percent. And lot coverage applies to all structures, uh, they require a building permit, so that would require, that would. Uh, include sheds over a hundred and twenty square feet. It would include uh, garages, uh, swimming pools, as well as uh, the foundations for the homes.
So that standard, is that backfire in any way?
I haven't, I mean, all of the community, I, I've worked for four different communities and they all had lot coverage requirements. Uh, for their residential districts, so I have not seen that to be a negative. Um.
Any board questions on that or thoughts on that?
And so what does that mean? That Bob Federico could chime in on?
I'm sure he'd be willing to, sure.
Well, and what does that mean? The requests are required, if the requirement's thirty percent, what do, what does that equate to for people that have, they have to do?
So essentially, what it means is you need to have a yard. Um, so lot coverage does not include the amount of land that is consumed by pavement. Um, so it doesn't include driveway. Um, but generally, it says that you can't essentially um. Cover, so say you got a. Fifteen thousand square foot parcel. There are yard setbacks, so there's a thirty-foot front yard, fifteen-foot side, twenty-five-foot rear yard. Oh, in this case, there is actually a lot coverage requirement of thirty percent, so. Probably a better example is the RC district with the minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. So without a lot coverage requirement, uh, essentially, they could put structures everywhere else. So you'd have the thirty-foot front yard, fifteen-foot side yards, twenty-five-foot rear yard. But then every other square inch of the parcel could be covered by. Swimming pool, um, you know, uh, sheds, uh, garages, our garage.
Greenhouse.
Exactly, so it just enables you to have more open space in between buildings.
And what would you have to go for a variance if you wanted otherwise?
Yes.
Any thoughts on that one?
I think that's a, a, an appropriate uh. Consideration to make.
I'd agree.
Okay, and then by way of that, does that sort of limit the height? Because otherwise you just have a really skinny tall.
Are you already have height requirements? So in these residential districts, the maximum height is thirty-five feet.
Okay. Okay, um, and then finally, I know Fred's not here, unless Lori, did you have any? I was just gonna mention, we talked about ground order advisory committee outside of, um, I know outside of town meeting, we wanted to talk about. Fees, I know you were taking a look at fees. We talked about the Mullins rule, do we want to um, enact that? I don't know if there's anything else outside of town meeting items.
Yeah, so uh. General bylaw, this is something I discussed with Fred. Adding an exemption to the earthwork requirements for land disturbance permits. That's something that we were talking about doing.
What is the exemption?
I'm sorry?
What does that mean? The exemption?
So essentially, you wouldn't have to apply for. Um, both an earthwork permit and a land disturbance permit, because they pretty much do the same thing. So right now, in the earthwork regulations. Uh, there's exemptions for various different uh, permits. But not this new land disturbance permit, so that's the one that the Conservation Commission. Um. Issues for stormwater management.
Mm-hmm.
So if the earthworks was exempted, you and Fred would look at it, make sure nothing is missed by. So whatever would be skipped would be added as a land disturbance?
So, yeah, so right now, the land disturbance and stormwater management permit. Essentially, uh, does the same exact thing as the earthwork permit. So applicants are required to go to these two different boards. In order to essentially accomplish the very same thing. So it's very redundant and it slows down the permitting process and it costs them extra money. And that there's no benefit.
And so when they come in with an application, you would pretty much just direct them which board they would need to go to to get both of those or all of that?
Correct, so instead of going to the earthwork board, they'll just skip the earthwork board altogether and just go to conservation finish. Yep.
Makes sense.
Okay, any other non-town meeting ones?
Sounds like a lot.
Yeah, so then we also have the ground, so finally, the ground order one. I just wanted to make sure, Lori, if you had other stuff, just to keep on our radar, because I have here.
Um, well, the second article uh, that we actually skipped over. And maybe I can explain that one. Um, so this one actually, um. I think is something different than you think it is.
Okay.
Uh, so if you, if you look at the recommendations for zoning-related warrant articles. Uh, where it talks about modifying the language of section seven dash oh-three dash zero five zero. Special permit with site plan approval D one.
Mm-hmm.
One thing I realized. That um, of course, the, the ZBA. Has a site plan approval authority as well as the planning board. However, currently, the way this uh, procedure is written up. Um, so the last line says, submission requirements shall be in accordance with the rules and regulations of the special permit granting authority. Well, the ZBA does not currently have any rules and regulations for. Um, so that really kind of came up uh, when we were reviewing a recent application. So we really want to modify the language, unless the ZBA, and this, you know, is something that. Uh, certainly, we can discuss during the joint meeting with the ZBA. Unless they want to adopt their own rules and regulations. Unless they want to adopt their own rules and regulations. Uh, we really want to make sure that people are applying to the ZBA for site plan approval. Are following the rules and regulations of the planning board. So that really is the um submission requirement. So that's what tells people what they have to submit.
Okay.
That makes sense. I think two sets would be confusing. Because then we'd have a set, the ZBA would have a set, kind of like the earthworks land distribution.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, geez, uh, we both want plans of the same size. We want the same information on the plan. So, uh, it doesn't make sense that the ZBA has their own identical. Regulations with their heading on them.
Along those lines, do we have to move into our bylaws? What's currently in the rules and regs about technical expertise, like payment for, if you do a peer review? Is that okay in our rules and regs?
Um, I think that there is also something. Because if we, I think that this will take care of that problem. Because here we're saying the submission requirements and the language having to do with uh. Technical review is in that same section, if I remember correctly. I don't have it in front of me right now.
It is in the rules and regs for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll verify that.
Okay. And when, when, um, do we think we're doing a joint meeting with the ZBA?
They want to do it uh sooner rather than later. I don't think we're ready yet, because I still have various uh regulations to write, uh, various articles to write. Um, but maybe December.
What do we think of our public hearing?
I was thinking the public hearing would be in January.
Okay. And the warrant closes, what do we have, at beginning of February?
That's usually what it is.
The public hearing is usually February or the.
No, I think the warrant usually closes in February.
Okay. So. Yeah, may, so do we think, do we reserve, in the past, we've reserved two nights for the public hearing, although I don't know if that was by design or just by the way. Our, our time was scheduled. There's no requirement for X number of hearings. It's just. What do we use to continue? Do you, does anyone remember why we did it in two nights? Was it just a matter of volume and discussion?
I, I think that we had several that we're gonna have a lot of discussion or potentially a lot of questions on. I don't remember. Put a buffer in.
So how are, how do you feel about having the um? Public hearing. On Janu- gosh, you want to do January third? Or would you rather do the seventeenth?
I'd rather do the seventeenth.
I know people go on vacation, so.
Maybe the seventeenth, and then maybe even hold the joint meeting till the third. To January third.
Okay. Okay. Do you usually have two meetings in December?
That's what I'm wondering, do we?
Depends on how much stuff we have.
Yeah.
Like, remember, I think with, with Staris and Bartlett, I think we almost had one on, like, Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
We met so many times.
Yep.
There was discussions of it.
So, yeah, I think the last time we did a joint meeting, we did like. We started an hour early and just had the ZBA join for the first hour, and then we just carried on. If we had like a public hearings or whatever else, we could just move on to that. Sorry, Amy, did I cut you off? It sounded like you're.
No, no. I was gonna ask Laurie if she saw many applications coming down the pike or we seem pretty wide open.
I have a couple, you know, that uh I've been waiting for, for a while. And they haven't filed, so um. Sometimes it's really tricky to pin these people down. So I may have applications or I may not. Right now, I don't have any.
As long as they don't call it for Christmas Eve.
Okay, so we have, um, getting back to groundwater. So that's something that we, it's probably our toughest. Rock of the bunch to talk through, and Fred's not here, so I, you know, I want to be mindful of that, but I also want to make sure we figure out what we want to do there, so. Um, uh, for me, it's a matter of. Either, what is, I want to figure, what is, and it'd be helpful to hear from Fred the next time we meet, like, what is the value to him of this committee? Like, where does he find value? Unless, Laurie, you already know and feel comfortable speaking to that.
No, I definitely would prefer uh Fred to speak on that.
Okay, so I'd love to know in his mind, what's the value of this committee? And then, of course, for the planning board. What do we see as the val- what is, what do we see as a value of this committee? Or, or do, I mean, I guess as a board, we can, we don't need Fred for that. What do we see as a value of that, of the groundwater committee? In its current state?
As the what?
In its current state, as it exists today.
My main concern that I had brought up last year was when I was on the groundwater committee. At the very beginning, when I first started the groundwater committee. We used to get the operations and manual reports, operations and maintenance, I mean, and the stormwater management reports. And then the committee decided that they didn't want to read them and it was too much paper, so they were just gonna rely on Fred. And then the calculations, I think, are done on a computer and it's Fred and the applicant to come up with the. You don't have more than fifteen percent. So we got the numbers from Fred and Fred read the reports, and it was pretty much. Just the letter from Fred was going to the groundwater committee and they decided, you know, whether or not they agreed with it. And then I looked at surrounding towns who have a ground, and nobody else had a groundwater committee. Fred's letter would just come to us. Or the ZBA, depending on who the special permit granting authority was. And um, an applicant in the past too did complain that it was an extra step. So I just didn't know if, if there weren't necessarily expert groundwater people on the board. Should we have an extra step? Where if they're going off of Fred's letter, the ZBA or the planning board can go off of Fred's letter too. That was just mine. What, what is, I mean, have you, has this been discussed with Fred? What does he feel that the committee adds and the purpose of it?
Well, that's the way to find out, unless he, yeah.
I think that that's definitely worth um hearing that input.
Yeah.
The only other town I found with the groundwater committee was Sherborne, and what their groundwater committee did was they were handed. Specific things where they went above and beyond, like, say you were putting in a turf field. They were in charge of researching the turf field and make sure that turf field wasn't going to affect the groundwater.
Mm-hmm.
Stuff like that, like very specific. Items, just to make sure. It wasn't more detrimental to the water supply.
Sure. I think, yeah, I could see it in an instance where, number one, you had specific expertise, like every other committee, we want, like. Amy, your design review committee, we say, who are the experts we want to supplement, you know, and look at these, we want a landscape architect, we want an architect. We want a, whatever those, whoever those five people are, everyone has a role. Even I feel like for the traffic and safety committee, it, we want experts on there. We want experts on. The committees that have domain expertise and what we're looking for. So to add, just add five people to the process and make our applicants go through an extra step.
Right.
Many have complained about. By the time they get to us, they're sometimes aggravated, that they've had to repeat everything. So they feel like. With, to your point, Amy, the applicants come to us after they've already done their whole spiel at another committee. And they feel aggravated to have to do it again for us, the whole routine all over again, and we ask questions, they've already been asked, so now they're mad, they're answering twice. But we're the board that actually decides, and they're getting frustrated with us. So that's, that, that's also a problem. Um, I, so, go ahead, Amy.
And then this particular applicant, they went back to the groundwater committee maybe once or twice. And they took their advice and went to the ZBA. And where the groundwater committee said yes, for one, the ZBA said no, and then on another one, which was a pool. The groundwater committee said no, but the ZBA said yes.
Oh, boy.
The applicant said, what was the point of all that? Because then the special permit granting authority at the end makes their own decision. That was one meeting where the, the special planning granted, special permit granting authority actually did the opposite.
So either, i- in my mind, it either has to function for a purpose that, where, you know, if it's. Ex- if there are experts on it that add value in their domain expertise of the committee. Or if it's above and beyond cases where, like you just mentioned, Amy. If it's an instance that's out of our normal range, and that would actually be a helpful step. For that people, we could manage expectations, that you're doing something extra, so you need an extra step. Not just, you know, jam them up with one more committee to me with, I don't know, Anthony, you're in the committee now.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we rely extremely heavily on Fred. Uh, and I'll be honest, to me, it's a math equation, and, you know, when I make a decision. Uh, not even a decision, but just we apply the conditions. It's, you know, my question of Fred is still that, does the calculation work? And if he says yes, then I, I feel as though we have to look at the conditions and set them. Um, and if it's no, then it's, then it's not, so, um, or usually it's a, just a, if. The SPGA agrees to approve it, then here's the conditions that they should apply regardless.
But are you adding conditions? Are people in the committee saying, oh, let's add this condition? Or is there?
Well, there is a discussion around the conditions, so there. You know, that is a part of the process, and things may be added.
I mean, are there instances where you go through groundwater without a stormwater report?
Well, I think there's, there's times where there isn't a stormwater. Report done.
So then maybe that's where the groundwater committee has. A, a little bit more say or input about what are the special conditions for this piece of property that. May not require a stormwater management, but a, you know, a specific type of, of. Input from the committee. Site-related, specific, I'm just trying to.
Right.
Yeah. It might have changed since, um, last year, we redid our stormwater management report. So do those, Laurie? Go to the Conservation Commission now? I don't even know. Or do they go to groundwater still?
So the stormwater management, uh, so that's triggered at one acre of land disturbance or more.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they get the stormwater calculations, so that has to do with TSS removal. And, you know, whether there's nitrogen or phosphorus removal. Um, so they're actually looking at the stormwater mitigation that's proposed. And verifying that it is appropriate for the site, so. Um, it's a, it's a different angle.
Hmm.
Than uh what the groundwater committee is doing. So it's my understanding that the groundwater advisory committee is mostly concerned with, um. Kind of like recharge and also chemicals. So they particularly have, um. Uh, they're concerned with septic systems. Uh, they're concerned with any sort of industrial use. And how that could impact the aquifer. Um, so stormwater management is looking to ensure that. There's enough infiltration, so you're not negatively impacting your neighbors. So they're looking at surface flow. More than they're looking at the, the groundwater. I mean, they are looking at groundwater. So they're infiltrating the surface flow, intercepting the surface flow, infiltrating it into the ground. Uh, so that they don't have stormwater runoff. Um. But they're not as concerned, like their jurisdiction isn't. Uh, to look at what indus- industrial uses are utilizing on site. So they're not looking at, um, okay, well, we just had thirty Forbes Road. Um, so they're not looking at the chemical list. Uh, to find out what types of chemicals are being used and. Uh, what sort of mitigation that they measures they have in place to contain the chemicals within the building itself. So that is completely not within the jurisdiction of stormwater.
But that's groundwater. And the groundwater too, and they're not chemical experts, we pretty much, I don't know about you, Anthony. But when I was on it, we relied, there was somebody that worked for the fire department, he worked in the hazardous. I think he looked at the list and Fred looked at the list. Like, even with the thirty Forbes Road, that list was extensive.
Hmm.
So I would hope that the hazardous person in town, the fire chief and Fred went through it. But I don't think it's anything the groundwater committee would read every single chemical and research. I tried a couple of times. But it became very time consuming. So we really relied on Fred. So in my, from what I heard from a couple applicants. If we're, if the groundwater committee is just relying on Fred, then why can't the special permit granting authority reply on Fred? Because we have had some cases too where we have to send them back to groundwater. And groundwater meets the second week of the month, so then that pushes off the application for like another month before they come back to the planning board. Whereas if we ask the question and Fred's right there in the audience, we can answer it immediately. Without saying, oh, you have to go back to the groundwater committee for that.
Bill, anything from you? You're quiet on this one.
No, I'm quiet on this one. I.
I think you kind of have to be on the committee.
Yeah, or at least have been, you know, part of it.
Gotcha, no problem. All right, well, we obviously want to hear from Fred. I think all of us acknowledge that's important to find out from him what he sees as the value. I think. There, I think there are a couple options to consider, either full consideration of disbanding it. Changing the jurisdiction maybe of what they, their function, what they do, like, do they just focus on above and beyond type things? Or changing the um composition. So do we actually set, like we do at design review? Certain, um, pe- certain areas we're looking for expertise and. I, I don't know if that's more challenge, I guess maybe Fred could weigh in on whether that's. A challenging thing to find based on what we'd be looking for, I don't know, I'm not sure. Sometimes we struggle even on design review, or maybe not in a while. Have we struggled with finding the right expertise? Maybe not as much.
Um, I thought I was muted. I was trying to find the button. Um. Now, we have an architect, landscape architect, and a resident right now. We actually have an open slot.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, Laurie, we can't hear you. Oh, no, still.
You're muted. You're muted.
Well.
There you go.
Oh, there we go. I kept clicking on it, it wouldn't unmute me. Weird.
Maybe it's the mouse.
I just wanted to let you know that the composition of the groundwater advisory committee is. Embedded in the zoning bylaw itself. Uh, so if you decide that you want to modify the composition of the committee. That's where we would do it. We would do it as a zoning bylaw change. So it's on page seven sixty-one of uh the zoning bylaw.
And it would be then trying to find someone to fill the slots. If you had specifics like that we wanted. Groundwater experts.
Yeah, right now, it's one member of the Board of Selectmen. Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Planning Board, and Water Sewer Commission. Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Planning Board, and Water Sewer Commission.
And all the spots are currently filled, is that correct? All spots are filled. There's someone from, uh, ConCom, there's someone from Board of Health, Water Sewer.
Yeah. Anthony?
There are.
Oh, Anthony, we can't hear you. Nope.
I honestly don't know who's on which board.
Oh, okay, but there's no, like, most people come and showing up and are participating and whatnot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Diane is from Conservation, and then Bryant is Water Sewer.
Okay. And then where, i- it also in the bylaw, Lori, is it, like, if we wanted to focus on maybe what they do, is that also, I assume that's also in here. I see it says the establishment. Don't, well, I guess.
Yes. It does specify what they do in the zoning bylaw there.
Okay. Okay, so I guess nothing we can solve tonight, but we'll, we'll wait here from Fred, um, the next time around on that one. Okay, I think that's a wrap, that I think we did the full agenda, everything else we already covered. So unless there's any other businesses, are motion to adjourn? Oh, Millie, sorry, you, you're muted though. Millie, you're muted.
Still muted. Okay. I haven't been to, through the process before where, um, an applicant or an appeal was dismissed. So does that mean that these two applications are closed and cannot be either brought up under any circumstances other than a new, a completely new application?
That is my understanding. So, uh, there, there was, uh, the exercise that we went through in the executive session recently pertaining to one of the applications. And then the other one, uh, was withdrawn by the applicant.
Yeah.
And it's dead. They're selling the property.
Okay, so I can put those files away then.
You can.
Good to know.
Yeah.
I have more room in my, in my office now.
There was one, um, was a dismissal with prejudice, and then there was one with dismissal without prejudice. But it doesn't meet the requirement of general law, C forty A, section seventeen, that it be filed within twenty days of the decision being filed in the office of the town clerk. So, uh, as a practical and legal matter, um, this matter is concluded.
Okay. Okay, just wanna clarify, that's what I understood. Thank you.
Yeah, so unless you wanna hang on to them for good measure.
No, no.
Okay. All right, then. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?